All right, we're gonna call the meetings of the non-AM board of select for this Thursday, May 23rd. We transferred the normal schedule from Monday to Thursday because of the obligations other members had. In order to have the quorum, we changed it tonight for this Thursday, but we will be always going back to our regular scheduled meetings on Monday. This is just an exception for tonight's. We're gonna start this meeting off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, one thing checked out.
Did you get a chance to look at the minutes?
I got a chance to look at the minutes. I do have a couple changes.
Go into the accounts payable and payroll first.
Yep, sure, go there.
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable for May 13th, 2024, and payroll for May 14th, 2024.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second for the accounts payable and the payroll. All in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Tim Daebria.
Minutes.
All right. I have a couple changes to the five-six minutes. On line six, I was present on five-six. It was the 5:13, I was on phone.
Okay.
And on line 58, there's just a slight typo. I believe that should be valve seal repair, not valve seam repair.
Okay.
That's what I have.
Yeah, I had line 37 as well. Now that I read it, maybe it does make sense. It, yeah, it makes sense now that I read it the second time. Line 127, it just kind of says five auditors are on site and will be here for, I think it was three days.
So, I don't recall. Sound reasonable, John, sound right?
I believe so, I don't recall. I'll make a note.
Okay.
Line 127.
Right. Anything else?
That was all I noticed.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from five-six with the following changes. Line six, I was present. That's John Decker. Line 58, change seam to seal. And line 127, add, at the end of that sentence, add three days.
I second.
Motion and a second on the minutes for the meeting of five-six.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Tim Daebria.
Meeting of minutes for 5:13.
Um, I...
That was pretty quick.
Right, it was quick. I, on the first motion, I believe I did say aye, but being on the phone, you guys probably missed it, or whatever, it was missed. So, I'm fine with it not being there.
Okay. I could've been, your wife was saying, she's gotta get out of the car.
Yeah, yeah, well, she was already out of the...
Yeah, it's fine.
Out of the car.
Yeah.
All right. So, I'll make a motion to accept the 5:13 minutes as written.
I second.
Motion and a second.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Tim Daebria.
Okay, minutes are done.
And the non-public for 5:13.
Non-public.
I make a motion to approve the non-public meetings for May 13th, 2024.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the non-public minutes for 5:13. Roll call.
Aye, John Decker.
John Moran.
Aye, Tim Daebria.
Okay, done with minutes. Committee reports. I'll start off, I was at a planning board meeting last night. One thing you're gonna see coming in front of us, well, we had two meetings, I think, four, but last night, we had a big discussion, and it was more on the fact of going over our new fees and adjusting fees for developments, and how we're gonna take, try to take some of the burden of what the town end up paying. So, for instance, during the meetings, before the meetings, we usually like to mail out packets to all the members. Well, the packets mailed out are $10, and there's seven members plus altern, so it couldn't get close to $100 bucks.
Right.
Every meeting, we have to send out a packet. So, you know, we talked about getting escrows going for developers, so that we can take money off those in order to cover the costs, so it doesn't come onto the town for the covered cost for those. And there'll be some other adjustments being made, and that'll come in front of us when the board finishes up on other fees of readjusting for other line items and stuff in there. And again, the purpose of doing that is basically take any of the financial burden off the town and put it onto the applicants that are coming in front of the board. Not doing it maliciously in order to try to make the fees, you know, outrageous or anything, but just to make them current with what's going on in the current relative to house prices, everything, you know, and fees.
Yeah, I mean, it should pay for itself, basically, self-funding.
Exactly, I mean, if you're coming in, you wanna put an 18-lot subdivision, I mean, the town shouldn't take any financial burden into spending any money in order for you to put your subdivision in. So, those were some of the things that we discussed about, that was a lot of the conversation. Then we learned about, about, last night, about the endangered turtles that are in town, and how we're a hub for the Blanding Turtle, which is very things, and Turtle Crossings, and how the Potawatomi Lake region of the area is one of the known well habitat for those endangered species. So, something that was brought about too, for having one of the members to go speak at the lake association meeting, in order to promote the information and to, because all the dirt roads and stuff are well in the areas and stuff like this, is just to get the word out and how we can help protect and...
John, what's the name of the, this particular endangered turtle?
The Blanding Turtle.
A what?
Blanding. You've probably never seen one, so, that's the reason why. But that was also part of, part of the discussion was on, you know, doing new developments, and when they're crossing wetlands in those developments, how to make passageways so that they don't have to go over the road, you know, and one of the things that was done before is if you actually go to Francesca Way, and you look, there's some of the, there, they actually have extra culvets designed for the fact of, you know, for turtles, frogs, snakes, whatever, passageways so they don't have to cross the road.
They have some of those in the state park as well.
Yes, exactly, and there's actually one going up, the state's looking for a grant to do an off-reservation road up there too, so...
And the bridge replacement, they're doing a 152.
And that's two there, yeah, so there's quite a bit of information there, it was very informative for something that, you know, lived here all my basic life and...
Never seen one?
No idea, probably couldn't tell the difference between this turtle and a turtle.
What's the difference between a Blanding Turtle and a...
Like shells, like kinda...
One of the big, one of the big things about them is just the fact is that it takes 16 years after they're born to get to the point of factor of being reproduced, being able to reproduce. So, if something happens in those years, I mean, it really can decimate the, so, that's why they're actually in a point where it needs to be something to address, so, just something interesting that we talked about, so, we'll get more with that, and we brought up to the, you know, bring that up into the highway department, you know, for future culvert exchange, you know, that we might do in town, you know, replacing culvets, you know, maybe instead of doing a 12-inch culvert, we'll do an 18 or something, so the fact that it's, you know, better for the animals, you know, to travel through and stuff like that, so, something for the planning board ahead of time. And then we had a conceptual review of a small subdivision, which we don't know is gonna happen, it's just conceptual, it's off-dam road, so, that was last night's meeting. Anything else? That's what I got for that. Budget, was anything, or?
No, we're just working on putting together that workshop with New Hampshire Municipal Association right now. Mr. Fran Gray sent out an email to figure out what everybody's schedules are to get something out there sooner than later.
And CIP, we will probably, hopefully meet in July or August.
Okay.
Who's that, John?
CIP, hopefully we'll meet in July or August.
And then with, for rec, they still have three hole sponsorships left for the disc golf course they're trying to build over at Marston, so if there's anybody interested in sponsorships, it's $500 for the sponsorship, three holes left, and they're hoping to get that, working on that soon, and they don't have any lifeguards that have applied as of now for positions, so, right now, we don't have a lifeguard for the rec department, so...
Those are lifeguards for...
For the rec camp.
And where's that located?
It's, it's here, but when they travel, they take a lifeguard with them to...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Got it.
It's not a full-time position for the town beach, it's for their purpose only.
Lifeguards are hard to find.
Yeah, the state hasn't been able to find any for the state park, and that's why they've been able to get full capacity for a long time now.
Yeah.
But that's the state not willing to pay anybody, so, another person. Anything else within departments? Nope. All right, Ellen is not here tonight, so I'm gonna go over the town administrator's report from what she had. So, some general information, if you guys haven't seen yet, the tax bill has come out, it is online, so, it's not as bad as it was in December, but it's still there, so...
It's in the mail.
Yeah, it's in the mail, but it's also available, if you're actually online, yeah, you can see it online, and if you actually correspond, getting your tax bill online instead of getting it mailed to you, you should've already had it in your email sent to you. And we advise it's great for people to do it online, if you get your bill online instead of getting it mailed, I know some people wanna get it mailed, but you also save the town money from the mailing cost of mailing it out to you, so... News to me, the grader's out of service until the cutting edges rip teeth, rip teeth arrive from the part supplier, so I guess we'll be waiting on that. And when the parts come in, the road gradings will continue. The recycling center has resumed its summer hours scheduling, and it'll be open on Thursdays tonight, it'll be open till 7 o'clock, so, if you're not there now, you ain't getting And they're actually doing a petition, and then we'll probably have this later conversation, about a conversation about changing the summer hours and doing them nine to five, that is not part of the discussion tonight, and that will not be discussed tonight, but that is something coming up in the future, whether we change the hours back to nine to five, and that being the permanent hours for the whole year, and not having summer hours, so, if that interests you, keep informed, and I'll keep you up to date on when we have that as an open public discussion, but that is not happening tonight. And then, did you guys see the action items for Jennifer Hilton and Rob Ellison about the road names? Well, excuse me, Jennifer Hilton was for tax credit purposes. These are just action items for us as the board, not really general public information or needed to be public, but it's just stuff for us on the board to talk about. The naming of the road consideration, Ellison Drive, we'll have to look at that, I literally just got it today, so, something for us to talk about in the future about changing that over. Ed Veale did send something to us, which I didn't get to read yet, about the road, and that was not brought up, so, we can put that off till next meeting for the name of the road. We do have a set name roads that we have already in file, but people are allowed to petition their own name of a road, for instance, you know, and it's subject to the board's approval, as long as it doesn't conflict with any other names of the town, you know, to make it tougher for 911 calls. So, for instance, you can't have one road named Robin Way and have another road named Robin Drive, they're too close in common, so, these are things that we look at when we approve people's names for roads that go on.
Did you wanna, I mean, did you wanna, it's not a whole lot in regards to...
Do you wanna read it?
I had already read it.
I read it.
You did?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Seems pretty straightforward.
Right, I just have a, I'd like to see the, the plan, I mean, 'cause it's, it sounds like it's a road with a narrow access to a single house, why is it just not a driveway?
Do you want a copy of that one?
Um, is there, it looks like there's one here.
Well, this is all the copies of the house plans and, you know, these are all house plans for the house.
It's a subdivision, that, it's a piece of land that was subject to subdivision, so I think that's why they're looking to name it a road, not a driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, but if it was a subdivision, then it would have, that name would've already had been addressed in front of the board, the planning board, and then that name would've been given to us as a request for approval.
Right, it's just a subdivision of one house, one lot, right?
Right, which doesn't really consider what we call in this town a subdivision.
Right, right, exactly.
But the problem is, is he can't, they can't name it, they can't number it to be in compliance with 911 because of where it falls in the road.
I don't understand why, is there like, is there, is a number before it, is it like a half, or?
That's from what I'm reading through, that's what I understand it.
That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm not clear on.
There are numbers between 168 and 172, so 911 cannot allocate a number between, between those two, so I spoke to Dale as well, so that's the reason that we have to either pick up a name, or we have the request from the board to name the approved, and it's a culvert sap, it's a single house.
Right.
It was a subdivision, it was a seminaker, that was the, divided into 5.1, that's the one that is involved, so that particular road will not be serving to anybody else either, it's just only the drive.
So, the one, one house is 168?
Yeah, the other one is a 172.
So, what's wrong with...
And there's nothing in between.
What's wrong with 170?
That's, it's not existing, so...
Wait, 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 please come up to the board.
Yeah, sorry.
Who are you and what are you talking about?
Yeah, okay, let me explain. So I'm giving the name of the name, sir.
What's your name, sir?
Ben, and the last name is Dissoni.
I'm Robert Ellison.
Edison, please.
D-I-S-S-A-N-Y-A-K.
And you did sign in?
Right, he's hanging.
Okay, please do, at the end.
At the end, you can sign in.
All right.
So, this you're asking for is just to name the road, but this will not be a town road?
No.
Not maintained by the town or anything?
No.
It's just for clarification, for 911 purpose, to have a road with your name or whatever, the family name on it, for that purpose only?
Correct.
Right, which is why...
Just for people to be clear, it's not a new road, not the town's maintain...
Right, private road.
Right, so my understanding of the 911 is they want less roads or whatever, if there's an available number, I don't understand why 170 is not available.
No, no, that's what the Dale has checked, the number availability, so he's the one who came out and gave me the, all the list of the others that are approved, so then he said, either you pick up one of those names, or alternatively ask the name that we would like to have, so he said it's up to the board to decide whether to grant it or not, but then it's being, the family being in Nottingham for almost close to 100 years, and the family continue to live, so we serve the Nottingham community, so that's why he said, so it is up to you to decide whether or not that could be granted, and it'll be exclusively used only for that particular house, it's not the common drive.
Right, and that's, that's why I have, that's why it bothers me, because it's a single house on its own road, that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, that, that's what the bill inspector, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand that, but I, I don't, it doesn't logically make sense.
It's what 911, I guess, is the way they do it. Dale, he's the one that presented me with needing to be a road, it's not, I'm not the one that came up with that.
No, and I, and I'm not, I'm not, you know, so... I'm not judging you at all, I'm just...
John, you understand why, is it because it's a subdivision, that it would be a road and not a driveway, is that correct?
Well, I mean, I'm reading, you know, Ed Veale's con, here, you know, as it says, you know, I've been on the planning board for years, so it's not like something I don't know of.
Right, right, to me, it sounds like a driveway.
I mean, again, a, a single house is, is a driveway, you know, as for when you use the Fernald subdivision that's off Deerfield Road, they had an extra lot put on there for three in order to get a road named there, instead of a, you know, a split, single driveway, so, I've never come across this before, so I'm sorry that I don't, can't just give you a straight-up answer.
First for me, too.
This is not, but...
Because we were trying to build the, the house, then the ever source came back and they said you have to have a number, so we don't have a number, then we read to Dale and asking, so what's the number that we can use, then he's the one who came back and then presented saying that, so there's no number can be allocated, the only thing is that you have to take, pick up a name, and these are the names that are approved, so if you want, go in front of the board and then request that you've been there and the family has been sitting here and you've been serving the community, so ask whether or not, whether that could be approved.
I would feel more comfortable having Dale speak to why 170 is not available.
Is this right now inhibiting you from building a house or getting a loan and all that too? I take it?
Yes, yes.
What, what was this on?
Guile.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, so we did this, paid side down by, right past the...
We were on the board when we did Goldenrod off Priest, so, that was, what, a month or two, two months ago, we approved Goldenrod, same idea.
One house?
Yeah, but for, for them, I mean, you're sticking to the point that why isn't, I don't know why 170 can't be accepted by...
Right, right, I mean, there's, there's a number in between.
Right.
And that's normally how 911 works, is you go 168, 170, 172.
There's a house lot right in front of me that hasn't been built yet, and I think that's gonna be, and they're right on the road.
So, that's, that's, okay, now I understand.
Yeah.
So, there's another vacant lot there, okay, that's the key piece I was missing.
That hasn't been numbered yet, but that one's right on the road, I'm out back.
Yeah, okay, all right, and that's why I was like, this is the plan, 'cause I wasn't sure how it fit in, so, is, is that the plot?
This is Gal Road, there's the house, the subdivision, the lot out back.
So, it's that, so...
This is the driveway that goes in, I remember this plan coming through.
So, which is one...
And Zillow shows the existence of a 170-gone route about to be built.
Yeah.
The other lot?
That's the...
Or this lot?
That's the one out front.
Yeah, that's in the front.
Yeah.
But it's haven't been built, not built yet.
Not built yet.
So, which ones, can you point out the, the house numbers on this for me?
Yeah, let me think, I'll, I'll do it.
So, this is your property?
Yeah, so I'm up here, this would, I think, is 168, and this is 170, I believe?
168?
This is the empty one? This is the empty one that hasn't been built yet.
Okay, so then 172 is over here?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So, that makes sense, I'm good with it then. Okay, that's all I need.
Makes sense to me, I make a motion, do we need a motion to approve it? I make a motion to approve. We have the lot number.
Lot number four, map 40.
Lot number four, map 40, to be Ellison.
Is it a private, do we need to say private road?
Yeah, private road.
So, we have...
Ellison Drive.
Yeah. All right, I'll second that motion.
So, we have a motion right now to approve this way to be called Ellison Drive, in order to circum, to effectively work with E911 according to Dale.
Right, and get a, so they could proceed in building.
For a building. All right, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Tim Daebria.
And you did, they have checked already too, just, I mean, there is no other Ellison that I know of in town for a road.
I, I mapped pressed it, and I didn't see nothing even close.
All right, so...
I assume Dale did that as part of his check.
All right, so we'll send this over to Dale to get that numbered and set for you. So, it probably won't happen till sometime, maybe next week, obviously, 'cause the time...
Holiday weekend and...
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
But any questions you'll have, you can direct to us, but should be pretty cut clear, that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
It's gotta be a private way, do list the front of your road as private way.
For sure, yeah.
You know, maybe put a no trespassing sign, private way, thank you.
Can you print it?
Let me see.
That way they don't have to meet road standards or anything, or do they still have, are there, are there road standards they need to meet as a private way?
No.
I'm just asking, 'cause I don't know.
No, because you're not, you're not a class-five road, so, when you start going class-five or class-four, you have to do certain standards, but this is basically just a driveway.
Yeah, right, I understand it's basically driveway, but...
And then as far as the assessing, assessing for the tax credit for service-connected disability, do you need a motion to approve the, an exception for that?
I think so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to make an exception to the deadline for Jennifer Hilton's tax credit for service-connected disability.
We're all set up here, right?
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, this is for...
Thanks, buddy.
Thank you so much.
We're just continuing on. This right here is just a tax assessing office that the person's asking us for a motion because of stuff that...
You can sign in.
Thanks, Pam.
Uh, for, getting back to where I was saying, this is a motion for a property tax assessment, and this is the only reason why we're granting this, is due, there was uncircumstances not to her control, so we're granting her that, that waiver of time.
Sounded like we needed two, oh, yes, I, John Decker, for that.
I, John Moran.
I, Tim Daebria.
So, we approve her for that.
Right, but it sounded like we needed two motions. Please vote to accept the application. If you proceed, you will also need to vote separately on the approval of the tax credit. Okay.
That's gonna go...
That's in the second part.
That's the, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure we had it covered.
All right, so, we're going to, right now, do you guys want to, since we're pretty much right at 7 o'clock, do you want to hold off on to the rest of all the assessing stuff and go into our appointment?
Yeah.
Of Eric Jennings?
Do you want to just first address the Kevin Smith piece in the, her notes?
I didn't even see where that...
So, the SAU is looking to add, and since we, they have a rental agreement with us, they have to get it approved as us as, sorry, I took it as landlords, to make any improvements, and they would like to add, they got a grant to add more secure locks to the doors.
Like swipe system and, and additional hardware, or stronger hardware on the doors.
Correct. That's what they were gonna cost us, everything.
Right, the only question I have on that is...
Will we still have keys?
Well, uh...
Sorry, I'm just...
What happens when they, that eventually moves someplace else or whatever?
We would take over the lock system.
Yeah, but is it connected to the school system, and how does it separate?
I didn't even think that far, I mean...
The building's already connected, you can get there from the old town hall anyways.
No, Steve, to the school, 'cause it's a security system, so it's tied to, somehow tied to the school's security system.
Well, wouldn't we just dismantle it?
Right, I guess is that what happens, is it just gets dismantled and they could take the hardware then at that point, obviously not the door hardware.
Right.
But the security hardware, and that's probably fine, I just wanted to discuss it. It probably doesn't matter, it was more of a topic.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, I think you thought more, I think you thought more about it than I did.
No, no, it was just something to, you know, I try and consider everything, you know?
No, absolutely, John, that's, that's, nothing wrong with that. So, this was on the, the old town hall across the way. So, this was on the, uh, the Old Town Hall across the way. Uh, the SAU office, which the town's using, the school's using, excuse me, uh, which they're, you know, it's still town property. But they're upgrading the locks and system is what we're talking about, uh, to a new security system. Um, and I'm sure they need that because of, uh, information that's aligned inside there, so they'll be changing the locks on the town building. And that's why we're having the discussion right now about it. Uh, I'm fine with them doing it, I don't see any problems with that for securing the building even more, so I don't, I don't see a move. If we can do a motion, we'll just approve it, let them go about it.
I'll make a motion.
It's not costing us any money.
I'll make a motion to allow the school district to upgrade the security system and door hardware as needed, um, in compliant, or in compliance with the grant that they received, um, to the Old Town Office, SA, Old Town Hall, SAU Office.
I second all of that.
I hope our recorder got all that, so, uh, we have a motion in a second, a roll call vote?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Tim DaBrio. So, Ms. White will be putting together a letter of approval to add to their lease for that.
Yeah, cause they need it in writing.
Yeah. Sorry, I just wanted to get through that chunk.
No, that's fine.
So, but I'm gonna actually stop right there, and we're actually gonna go straight to the, our appointments. Uh, we have two appointments tonight. Uh, the seven o'clock appointment right now is Mr. Eric Jennings. Please, Mr. Jennings, come up front.
Eric Jennings, 42, Stevens Point Road. Um, I spoke briefly at the last meeting. Um, I just had a couple of questions for you guys, I don't know if you could answer them, and I, I wanted to, I'll make a couple of statements. The first question I have is, uh, why haven't they graded the roads yet?
Well, for right now, we just talked that the grader is not in service.
Okay, well, they haven't graded the roads since last year.
Okay.
Since, since the fall of last year. So, has it been broken that long?
Nope.
Are we waiting for the parts? Is it supply chain? I, I'm just curious.
We are waiting for parts, as previously discussed a few minutes ago.
How long has the grader been broken for, I was just curious?
Since, well, since our last meeting.
Right.
Because that's when he had said that he...
Two weeks ago?
I think it was three weeks ago, it was actually, five, six.
He had, he'd said he ordered the parts and he, at that point, he was completing the ditching and swales, um, before he could get to the grading. So, that was, it was in his list, he just, there was timing and other things that came up.
Just to be clear, I mean, so, when he was here on May 6th, so far this year, uh, they've completed Ledge Farm, Berry, Guile, Stevens Hill, Priest, and Mitchell, and then started on the camp roads. And then, as of that point, their point, their plan was to head towards the North River Lake?
Yeah, it was the next thing on the, right, North River Lake.
But he had ordered, at that meeting, he had said he had to order the new blade, and it still hasn't come in yet.
Okay, cause, cause the next thing I have is, uh, you know, the townspeople voted, um, dirt, certain dirt roads and to be, uh, town roads. My road, like I said, the grader hasn't been down. Do you guys live on a dirt road? I know you do, John. Um, if you don't, then you should drive down a dirt road in the winter. It is horrible on your vehicle. And if you don't, then you don't really feel my pain. Um, but we voted these in a few years back, okay? And, um, I called it, uh, I called last year several times, um, didn't hear back from the road agent. Um, then when I did hear back from him, he said he was gonna come out, and then next time I called him, he said it's winter. And I was like, yeah, I know it's winter, the, the roads are horrible, horrible. And he said, yep, it's winter, there's nothing we can do. Well, if there is a, a pothole out here in front of this place, does that get fixed in the winter, or do they wait till spring to fix it? I'm just curious, you know, I live on a dirt road, so I'm not too sure.
So...
They, they fix it, right? Come on, we, we know that they, if there's a pothole...
That's a sad road out front.
If there's a pothole on a, on a paved road, it gets fixed in the wintertime.
I'm gonna tell you.
Really?
Probably not.
Oh, okay, so...
And then I'm gonna also explain to you that the dirt roads traditionally are better in the wintertime.
Not this...
When, when we have snow.
You don't live on a dirt road.
I've lived on a dirt road.
John, what do you think about the dirt roads in the middle of the winter?
I don't right now.
I've seen them good and I've seen them bad. You've been here for a long time. Year to year, they can always change. This year, I'm not gonna say that the, again, we've had discussions with our new highway director, um, and I give him the first year, like anybody that started here, a little bit of leniency on there. Uh, there was been work addressed with the roads beforehand, with filling with rocks and stones and trying to rebuild up the roads. Um, as to some of the conditions of the roads, I've driven every single one. Uh, every one, I even went down yours this morning. Before I went to work. Well, it got, it got graded partially yesterday, by, not by the town. I'm just saying, I'm just saying I went down it, so... And, you know, I went over the part of the causeway, uh, and I've seen that, cause I lived there for quite a few years myself. Yeah, absolutely. And I've seen that road really bad in years past. So, can I ask you? But I understand where you're coming from and what you're asking, Eric, I really do. Again, I know quite a few people on the dirt roads. Well, here's the thing, okay, everybody got a good laugh about, um, potholes on the road. When you have a pothole that this desk is gonna fit in, and not just one pothole on your road, your road is made of potholes that this desk can fit in, and when you call the town, they say, it's winter, there's nothing we can do about it. What are your thoughts on that, John? Well, again, one thing's different from the years past, so we're gonna have to, people are gonna have to readjust and find out, is the fact that we are not using the grader as a plow anymore. And during the years past of what you're referring to, and again, was the fact that when he was using the plow and the grader, he had the grader down when he was plowing. And that is not how we do it anymore. So, there is an adjustment that has to be made, and we'll have to figure it out. But that is the reason why, in my opinion, for the past three years, where you haven't seen the roads in the winter, the conditions where they were, is because the fact that the grader is not being used to plow the roads like it was.
Plus, we have warm winters. In the warm winters, it's like freezing thawing, freezing thawing.
That creates the mud, right.
And that's actually the worst thing for the roads.
You know, you're absolutely, I, I live on a dirt road, I've been living there for a long time. I know how a pothole's made, I know how a pothole's fixed. The problem I have is they haven't been fixed. So, if I have a huge pothole, the size of this desk, and when I call the town, they say, it's winter. I, I know what the seasons are, you know what I mean? I know when spring, summer, fall, right, winter. Did I miss, did I miss one of them? No, I know, I know what the seasons are. My, my point here is, the last time I was here, I heard they say that the budget, there's no money in the budget, there's no money in the budget. Well, that's for other things. Well, well, but there's apparently no money to fix the road.
There, that's part of it.
So, but, they came down and they widened the road on certain roads, three feet, two feet, here and there, drive around town, you could see. And I talked about it the last time I was here, that if you don't own the property, you're like, that's great, but if you do, it doesn't look great. So, we're paying money to widen these roads, to haul the dirt out of these roads, and to deliver it to anybody that wants it. So, this is more money that we're, that we're spending, correct? I mean, we don't deliver it for free, do we?
Are we delivering it to people who want it?
Did you, have you seen the email? Did you, have you, so you haven't paid attention to what's going on? Cause I seen it.
On what email?
Uh, it said, is anybody's looking for dirt?
Is Facebook, are you talking about?
I'm not, I'm not on Facebook.
Well, I don't know what email you're talking about then.
Okay, so, let me talk to you, have you seen anything about delivering dirt to people that want it?
I didn't get an email.
The, the town, what you're talking about for the money being spent for that, that's in the general budget of the town for the highway. The money that we don't have was the money for road reconstruction. So, please, when people talk about, you know, the Warren article that didn't pass, you know, that money was also do a lot to pave roads and stuff like this. The general maintenance of a road is still in the budget, that it concurs of grading, plowing, uh, the general maintenance, all right? As towards major repairs on the roads, that was not in the budget, cause that was part of the Warren article money. So, you're right, the guy probably should be doing a better job. We have addressed it with him to do it. And I understand your concerns of where you're coming from. And I'm sure there's quite a few other people with you that are... Sure there are. That are, um, wishing and hoping that the, the situation, the roads will be issued better or taken care of better as we go along. Or, or at all. Like, when I do the road, John, when I do the road with, with my backhoe, I don't have anything fancy, I don't even have time, right? I go to work, I pay my taxes, my time is very valuable to me, right? After work, very valuable. But I do that road because it is horrible. I do not haul in material. I use the material that is there, I pull from the high, push into the low. I don't do a great job of it, but I do a hell of a lot better job than what it looks like. Nobody touches it. And nobody's been down that road since the fall, since the fall. You said yourself, tough winter, it's been a tough winter. Freeze thaw, freeze thaw, potholes is getting bigger and bigger. Horrible, horrible on driving your vehicle down there. It's quite an expense bringing your vehicle to the shop these days. But nobody is even...
I'm not gonna disagree.
Nobody has come down there.
I don't go down there with my car.
There you have it, people that live down there with cars. They pay taxes and that live in this town. So, if you could just be a little bit more compassionate about it, I'd appreciate it.
Believe me, I know what roads are talking about.
I see the smile on your face, I'm not feeling your compassion, I'm really not.
I have property on that road.
Oh, oh, so your renters probably are happy when they're gonna drive down all that road.
I know, and there's no renter there.
That's probably a reason why, cause they can't get down the road. Hey, wait, whoa, whoa. Let's, let's rein it in, I gotta, I, I, let's rein it in, but I don't appreciate the big smile, it's not a laughing matter to me, it's very serious. I live down there, I have a house down there.
I'm serious, too, I am very serious. It's, I understand that the road is bumpy, it's a dirt road. There's, the grader is broken, we don't maintain the things we, the way we used to do it, because the plowing is different. Um, and like I said, the roads used to be better in the wintertime than in the summer. It's been horrible in the winter, the last several winters, because of the freezing and thawing, I think is a big part.
And the lack of maintenance, the lack of maintenance.
And, I, I applaud Steve for getting rid of all that crud on the sides of the roads so that the water can actually run off, which has been part of the...
Not really Steve's crud to get rid of, is it? It's the people that own that property. And maybe if somebody came around and said, hey, could we widen the road there? You get a different response. I'm just saying. I own property down that road, too, and I own property along the road.
I, I'm not sure what...
All right.
It doesn't really matter.
Let's, 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 let's move forward.
Let's move on to that. Your displeasure with the roads is well taken and well understood.
My displeasure with the roads is, is well maintained, right?
That's fine.
How about, how about, could we, could we do a better job of getting back to the people in this town? My wife sent two emails to the road agent about the brush that was cut when they, when they pushed the roads back. And they took all the brush from both sides of the road and piled it on our side of the road. So, my wife sent two emails, never heard a thing back.
Okay, so Ellen was supposed to address that with Steve.
And he has been out for the past eight days.
Okay.
But these emails are gonna, that came in way before that.
Way, way before that.
I got you.
I, that's, Ellen's not here to address that, so I don't know where it stands.
Well, this is all gonna be addressed, so... We have, if you saw a couple of years ago, we have gotten a little bit better in responding to people, but...
Not, not much.
On certain situations, there are still room for improvement.
Absolutely, always, there's always room for improvement.
Always room for improvements, you know? And I'm sorry that I didn't know about it earlier from previous conversations.
We don't like, we don't like to mix, mix business with pleasure, you know what I mean?
No, but, you know, it's...
Life's too short to mix...
It's what we're here for, you know? Addressing people's problems and issues is what we, we signed up for this job for, so... It's not like we don't have this discussion on other issues for...
I'm sure, and I just wanted to address you guys about, about, you know, the grader's broken, it's been broken for, I got kids, I'm, I'm used to excuses, right? I know what they are. The road's been horrible since fall, and nobody's come down. So, is there, you said he's coming down, he's got roads on the, on the list that he's doing next? He's coming towards?
It is on the list, he was supposed to go to North River Lake area before, and then come down this way. That was what he had reported a couple of weeks ago, through, what, two and a half weeks ago, whatever it was.
But we can all understand that, that that is a long time to be living on a
Sure.
horrible crappy road that has nothing done to it.
Yeah, we literally just got our full, again, this is, we can kill one with the discussion, but the town finally, you know, if it was six months ago, where we finally came, you know, right course for the winter, where we finally got a full highway department. For the year before, we were working with two people. Uh, so, you know, one wasn't qualified to ride the grader, and so, I mean, the, the manpower wasn't there, too. Not making excuses. But there are some, some sort of reasons behind it. Towards why we haven't been addressing it and haven't been on the road now is something that we'll bring up with Steve. And you, I'll, we'll get an answer for you, and probably hopefully try to find a date of time of when they will be grading the roads and keep you in correspondence with that. But, um, yeah, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, I really do. And I'm not trying to be...
Right, and I'm not trying to beat you guys, well, I guess I am trying to beat you guys up.
Yeah, I know, you weren't trying to beat us up.
It is what it is.
I was already on Monday to beat you up, and I had to wait till Thursday, so I had a couple extra days there.
Hey, you have some more time to think.
Right, exactly.
Good thing, Eric, all right, next.
But, uh, but look, I appreciate you guys meeting with me, I just, I really wanna bring the attention to that. You know what I mean, if we can get it taken care of sooner than later?
Our plan is to take care of it, you know, it's just...
I, I get it, it's just been, it's been a long winter, like you said.
Everything can be done with time and money. Both of those are short.
Right, and the, the, the maintenance on my vehicles is costing me time and money because of the roads being so bad. That's why my frustrations are probably higher than maybe someone that doesn't have...
In the future, also, um, there is an email address that addresses the board for an email to send a message to the board instead of to the particular highway department.
Right.
So, that might help expedite some of these issues for us, you know, finding out last your discontent's last meeting, and then now, where if that email, and again, this is for future reference.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not saying you did it wrong or anything, but for future reference, there is an email that addresses the BOS that you can send to after you, instead of sending it to the highway department, send it to us.
But we won't, we won't respond. We'll address it in a meeting in public because we can't respond to it.
Yeah, ab- absolutely.
Exactly, but at least it'll be on our agenda of list of correspondence that came in from the BOS so that we can actually address it in public for everybody.
I'll, I'll tell, I'll tell Tina that. I'll tell her to send it to everybody.
The BOS general mailbox is where it comes into.
And, and we'll send it to, I mean, the more people that know, the, the better I feel that I'm being heard. You know what I mean?
You know, again, we, we're not trying to make displeasure of anybody.
No, no, I, I understand.
And that's not the, the goal of the town in order to try to, you know? We are trying to make everything work in the best applicable way as we can.
And is there, is there a way that I can get that, uh, part of that time and money taken off my taxes for grading the road?
No, no.
No way at all?
No. Hey, I was shoveling rocks and dirt on Cove Road for quite a few years.
See, I got a machine, I work smart and I, huh, you know what I mean?
I didn't have the fortune of having that, I should've called you, but
If there is a way though, I'm gonna figure it out.
Alright, good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Eric, we'll see you, talk to you later.
Alright.
So. Now we come to why everybody's here. So, any questions on that? Before we move on to the next?
Nope.
So the next, uh, appointment tonight is Joe and Don Fernald. Please come up and we'll address the issues that we're having. So. I don't wanna say this. So the town of Nottingham and the Fernald families had a longstanding since the 1960s about access to the Nottingham Town Beach located on Tuckaway Lake. Uh, and the access off Deerfield, Deerfield Road. To get to that access, there is a gate on that things and there is signs that right now say that there is no trespassing. And the use of that road is for access to the beach only. And it is from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Um, as time goes by, uh, things aren't the way they are. So we are here tonight to address, um, making sure that we can keep the access open for the people in town and respect the owners of the properties. Um, for when the access is not there, which people over the years, um, have decided that it's an anytime usage. Um, and the town in the years past, probably, or most likely, um, has done a more laxadaisical, um, procedure on that. So, trying to say this from the nice, you know, um, so tonight we're here to basically discuss with the Fernalds, um, you know, we did, you did get some correspondence from the town attorney and what we sent. You should've got that late this afternoon.
Couple hours ago.
Right, and, uh, obviously
Excellently timed.
Well, should've been there earlier, but, well, we know that. Uh, but this is for your time right now to address us. And then we will, uh, we can go on to that first, but is there something you want to say to us or? Fire away.
First, I wanna take, thank Tim who's taken the time to come out and walk and look at issues and stay in touch with us. I think you're the rec liaison? I thought you were just a nice guy. Courtney and the rec department back there who've been super supportive and probably had more therapy sessions than is on their payroll. So as the landowner who permits access to the town beach via our property, we thought it important to clear up the gossip and social media conspiracy theories that have run amok. First and most importantly, we have never suggested, demanded, or desired that the townspeople be denied permission to pass through our land to use the town beach from Memorial Day to Labor Day. We have not been embroiled in contentious negotiations with the Board of Selectmen. Nothing has even been presented to us as of two, two hours ago.
Couple hours ago.
Yes, we have been discussing issues and concerns in regards to the access for over a year, but for our part, we have always been hopeful that solutions would be offered long before Memorial Day this year. Unfortunately, other than signage being updated, there has been no plan or agreement presented to us. The town beach is a beautiful resource, but one that by the town's own admission requires a better management plan because too many people refuse to follow the guidelines set by the town. Please let us be clear, any privileges that have been lost in regards to using our land are a result of the disrespectful and reckless behavior of some. We are shocked and saddened as anyone that we have felt forced to post our land. We have been put in an impossible situation, so. We have been handed a liability and safety risk, all while openly being told that the town does not have the resources to protect us or the land that they would understand if we revoked the privilege of. And then we have our neighbors publicly lynching us for doing what little we can do to protect ourselves and threatening like, and then threatening legal recourse, all while expecting us to continue to offer this beautiful privilege. Here's the situation through our lens. Building a home on this land is a childhood dream finally realized after forty years of hard work, not privileged. There were more affordable spots to build on this parcel, but we intentionally chose to stay away from the town beach access because we had no intention of changing the access and we naively thought that we were removed enough from, from it so that it would not impact our well-being. During the construction of our home, we began encountering occasional trespassing on the job site. We found four active campfire sites all along the shore from the dam to and past our house. We had someone burn a recliner in the driveway in the middle of the night while our children were sleeping alone in the house. A fisherman refused to leave claiming it was state land despite the open cellar hole to his back. A man tried to launch his boat after repeatedly being told it was private land, not a boat launch. First action we took was just to put a camera on the driveway. We were a bit surprised at the number of people that thought it was okay to cross the dam, walk down someone's driveway, hang out on an active job site, and then give us attitude when politely informed that they should not be there. It was after the new to town couple who spent forty-five minutes on our job site tell us to go F ourselves, that we decided to check in with the town about what the expectations were in regards to the town beach, the access, the dam, surrounding land, et cetera. Action two, we sought out guidance from the rec department to, and to clarify what the expectations were for the beach. The message that we were given loud and clear is that the expectation is that no one should ever be on the dam, the bridge, or our land without permission and only on the beach when the gate is open. That is when we learned that both the rec and police departments had been struggling for years to get the previous administration to address the misuse and abuse of the land, including the town beach as it had become a burden and a liability concern for them as well. Action three, we decided just to post the bridge and the dam with the blessing of both the town and the state. Yet another measure that only offered minimal relief. While we did not continue to have as many issues with people coming all the way up our driveway once we moved in, it was clear that anyone who wanted to cross over the dam or bridge was going to do so regardless of the sign. We were forced to contain our dogs, who would of course want to say hello to humans rummaging around in the woods. We ourselves avoided that entire side of our property. We began to look forward to the gate closing, thinking that the foot traffic would die down. It actually got worse. Action four, we simply added another camera. Action five, reached out again to the rec department, police, and the town administrator for guidance. The chief politely pointed out that the private land ownership of the access and surround, surrounding land did pose a bit of an enforcement conundrum for them. She suggested that posting the entire perimeter of the land, while would be what met with resistance, would not just help us, but would actually help the town. We had just become the seventh generation in this family to own the land. All of the generations before and all those who still own large parcels in this town have always welcomed the public to respectfully recreate on their land. And we were just not ready to break that tradition. We were told that the town would update signage and put no parking signs. The chief and Courtney did all that they could on their end with getting the ball running, but the wheels of government run very slowly. They did both immediately do what they could to remind the public of the rules. Action six, no sooner than we said we were not prepared to post the land, things spiraled. We were getting attacked online by our neighbors following the Nixal alert. People began asking the board to force us to unpost our land, all while people continued to not just trespass, but get argumentative, combative, and downright rude when encountering us on our own land. So we acquiesced and posted the property. On September sixteenth, we experienced a rather violent windstorm. We were surprised to not just see people walking along the wooded trail that day, but two teenagers on a motorized scooter went around the gate, rode onto the beach, and were partaking in teenager-y activities. Since the PD was busy attending to a fallen tree on a power line, we moved them along ourselves. Minutes after they left the road, a huge tree came down across the road. All we could think was, oh my God, that was minutes away from seriously harming a neighbor's child or worse. We also began to consider the very real liability risks. We do not maintain that road. And it is very minimally attended to, mainly by volunteers just prior to the beach opening, and that is it.
It's better than Eric's road though.
We let the town know the tree was down so that they could come take care of it. And for the next several days, we watched people climb over and through this tree that was fully blocking the road to go and use the beach. A mother, a set of grandparents, and a toddler spent hours swimming on the beach with the access blocked. A woman went on an hour and a half long distance swim by herself, which she came back to do when the temperatures got very low and very scary hypothermia risk. We again went to the chief and the town administrator. We point blank asked who's liable if someone got hurt out there? And Ellen literally pointed and said, you are. She explained it was a gap in the insurance that the last administration had been aware of since realizing that they did not own or have legal easement over the road back in 2020. We notified them that it needed to be rectified. We have spent every day since worried that someone would get hurt out there. While the police have repeatedly told us to call for every trespasser, it is not always practical and it feels like a terrible use of emergency personnel resources. So we've been forced to police it ourselves. And while we don't really want to tell someone they can't take a simple walk through our woods, it has become the necessary Band-Aid. People come out here to drink and get high with alarming frequency. We witnessed emergency personnel needing to go in on foot to get out a Durham resident who had OD'd. We've had to move along a couple in the middle of winter, sitting on the dam, legs dangling over it, drinking, getting high, all with their dog had wandered over to our driveway. After the gate closed, the town beach becomes a dog park. We have encountered so many off-leash dogs too far away from their owners to be under verbal command. Once an entire pack of pit bulls with, not the, no offense to pit bulls, with four twenty-something years drinking and not even remotely watching them. We ourselves have nearly been bitten on more than one occasion. Most owners are not even carrying a leash. We encountered a young man dressed in all black one day, carrying a backpack and ammo box, whose motives we assumed were to just come out and target shoot, until he felt the need to run into the wetlands to try to conceal himself from us. We frequently have random men unknown to us who leave the trail and disappear somewhere on our land for long stretches. Again, we try to assume they're scouting animals for next hunting season, but truly most who hunt the property always come to us first. These men have not. To add insult to injury, in September, we received a phone call from the building inspector saying he had complaints from a town resident about the logging that had been done on our land. The logging had been done a year prior before we owned it and not just under the guidance of the state forester, but with the compliments for the job well done. When this resident did not get the answer she wanted, she continued to complain and harass multiple town employees and officials, hurling all sorts of accusations about us. Mind you, this woman openly admitted to walking on the property behind the closed gate with her kayak, which she launched from the town beach, all F, and said she would continue to do so as she pleased when she pleased. Sadly, others who also like free rein of the beach and land have also done the same. It is a waste of town resources and feels like a bit of a slap in the face. Honestly, while the trespassing itself is frustrating, it is how ninety-four, ninety-five percent of the people have treated us that has been absolutely heartbreaking. We can count on one hand how many people have simply said the thing we as decent people would say, oh gosh, I'm so sorry, I didn't know. Despite us being as polite as possible, seventy-five percent of the people have been indifferent and or argumentative. Five percent somewhere have been to, somewhere between nice and slightly apologetic. And twenty percent have been outright rude and combative. We have been sworn at, blocked from crossing our own land, asked, well, why should you be allowed to here then? Yelled at, and told that their rights supersede ours. Never in a million years would we have anticipated this. If when the gate is closed, the beach is closed, what purpose does anyone even have to be on our land? We are so blessed to live in a community with so many trails, including close to three thousand acres conserved by the Fernald family for your families and children's families to enjoy forever. After months of feeling like more was, little more was going to be done to resolve the issues before Memorial Day, it was us who took the initiative to reach out to the TA to request a meeting with her, the chief and the rec director, and then on to the board if need be. Our email went unanswered for nearly two months. Yet we sat and watched several trespassers get Board of Selectmen time to discuss our private property rights. For disclosure, we felt hung out to dry and served the town with a no trespass order. We of cour, of course, told emergency personnel that this did not apply to them and that anytime the town actually needed access to just let us know when. Our intent was simply to get them to take action so we would not be where we find ourselves today, one day before Memorial Day. It took until that action to even get the signage we were promised back in the fall and the meeting that we so very much wanted to get way ahead of this. To this date, signage and updated verbiage online is all the action that has been taken. We would like a management plan. We would like to know that we are going to be held harmless. We would like a maintenance plan. For those who are angry that you cannot freely recreate our land as you choose, when you choose, that is not an issue for this board. If you think that it is, be prepared to let us come over and have a party on your front lawn. You should think about what you're asking of us and of our government. For those who think taking the access through some legal, some legal recourse is the answer, what will change? The town will spend your tax dollars to take us to court. We own more than most of, we own more land than most of you realize there. So if you win, you'll need to pay us market value for it. And now the town owns a road that is in need, in need of quite a bit of work to even meet private road standards. And you still have a beach that is half a mile into the woods, surrounded by private land with the same management issues we are simply asking you to address so that you can continue to enjoy this access for free.
Lot of information. Lot of stories untold that I'm sure none of us knew about, uh, from which we're listed. You know, there becomes an issue, you know? And with anybody's property, right? How do you? You get the well, the, the beauty of using the beach from Memorial Day to Labor Day, which has been going on for sixty years, right? You know, the individuals that you spoke about don't represent the ninety percent of the people that do use it and that do meet all the criterias.
We don't encounter the people who are using it for the right reasons.
Right, cause they're there when they should be.
Correct.
You know?
We, we are happy to have them there when they should be.
And that's the way it should be. So, I mean, it's a conundrum that we sit there, we think of, I mean, you know, it's like, you'd wanna say, I mean, if somebody crosses anybody's private property during, you know, non-permitted times, that the police should be taking action for it. And again, I know the police has a lot going on, you know? We only have one cop on duty most of the time, so it's, you know, we're not gonna go hire four more police just to patrol the road. It's not financially responsible for the town. So you can see that we're in a situation also, and I understand where you're coming from. It would be annoying if somebody kept walking through my property, you know, at whatever times they want and not, you know? So, I mean, I understand where you're coming from. How to solve the problem is the, is the question.
Well, I think that like, we finally feel like we've gotten a little bit of a handle on it. Public lynching included, but it is what it is at this point. The minute you throw that gate open with no other plan than what you've done before, we are starting all over. It will become exactly what it was before. In the nineties, when the use became much heavier, the town said, we need a gate and we need a person sitting at the gate. Five minutes later, they said, oops, sorry, Fernalds, it's not in the budget.
Sounds like something today.
So, quite honestly, for us, that would go a long way to have someone sitting there at the very least. You know, if we can't in the interim figure out how to legally cover it.
But what, it's not, it's not just town people either, like
Yeah.
There's a lot of out-of-state people coming in here that, out-of-towners. I mean, when the, when the state park closes the beach, they get on their smartphones and Google where to swim and guess where they're coming? I mean, that stuff is going unchecked forever, you know? Some of the, the town's never done a good job managing it. And that's, that's all we're really asking for. We're not, you know?
Obviously, they're parking someplace.
Um, when the gates close, right, and some of them that are
The gates closed, they're obviously parking.
No, I'm talking there in the summer when the beach, beach is open.
When the beach is open, then it's
But to answer that, do you know where many of them are parking while they're going out for swim behind a closed gate, a half a mile into the woods, in front of the gate? So God forbid something happens to them, nobody can come in and help them, and there is no cell service, cell service out there.
So that, we should be at least ticketing those cars.
We were told they couldn't be ticketed. Well, now, now we had to park.
Because that's not the state, we can't ticket at the state launch. We should be able to take it there.
We did add no parking signs finally, but people park right behind the
You only have one cop on duty.
Right, right, I know, but So, so we just tow them. Just call the tower and get the cars towed.
Kinda where we got to, cause quite honestly, police aren't available directly via phone on the weekends, which is mostly when we have our struggles. And even when we do call, you know, a lot of times by the time they get here, the people are long gone. And that is no fault of theirs, this, this is a difficult spot to manage.
Yeah, that's right, it's cause it's
It's so removed.
Very, removed from things.
Did Courtney, did you wanna? I'd like to invite Courtney and Bridgette to add, like, I know that they've, you know, and all honestly, when we posted in part, it was because the rec and the police have also really struggled with the same issues and we did think we were helping, not harming the situation, so.
Yeah, sure. So we can be heard on the spring of the chair. Yeah, so I think this is a really tough situation. Um, a little background, I got here about eight years ago and to be honest, I've never really had the adequate staff to manage this property. Um, and we've talked, I've talked a lot with fun about managing this property. I've brought up to plenty of boards, I've brought, brought up to every town administrator that we've had. Just that we need, you know, we looked into a solar gate. Just that we need, you know, we looked into a solar gate. We have issues with just every part of it, to be honest. Um, it's, and then, you know, when COVID hit, we kind of took the approach of use at your own risk, which I think worked well, but then that totally removed any type of managing of that property. And, you know, we're kind of caught in this cross, you know, fire because we got to set up swimming lines and that becomes a liability and stuff like that. And if we're going to open this beach up to the public, we have to make sure as a town that we're doing the right stuff to keep people safe. But I mean, we've been down there and I've personally called nine one one.
Before the gate was even open.
And they were trespassing.
We had to drive from the beach all the way down to the end of the road before we could call nine one one. So I think it comes down to sa- like, safety issues for us, even during rec camp. If we have lifeguards down there, they're teenagers. And you see the way that adults are treating adults who own the property, like it makes me so nervous to have a teenager try to enforce any sort of rule.
Right.
And just get.
And the teenagers we get are there to save lives of people who are swimming. They're not there to.
Say, don't vape, don't drink.
Right, they're not there to enforce the rules. And the problem with that too is that I had one, I was lucky enough right before COVID to have one adult that worked for us. And that was probably the best year the beach was managed, managed because I had full time guards. I had an adult on site who could handle those situations and those confrontations. I don't have that time to go down there back and forth all summer long when we have summer camp and we have a million other things happening. So it's really tough. Also, if they're treating her like that, I've had awful interactions with people down there as well. So it's not an easy situation at all. And yeah, I don't know.
And for this year, it feels, you know, extra impossible since, you know, a year where we have a default budget. Courtney was smart and didn't buy swim lines. And now if it opens, we still don't have swim lines. So it's just, you know, this year seems extra hard, especially since it's supposed to be this weekend. So it feels impossible. But again, it's just not safe. And Courtney's tried for several years to say that it's not safe. And, you know, I know it's a gem to a lot of people, but when it's not safe for residents, mentally, emotionally, or physically, then something does need to change.
And the town unfortunately has more protections in the law than we do as private owners. So now that risk that is at your own risk is a lot more on us.
There are, I, there are additional protections for you guys if it's in certain current use status.
Current use is not the correct thing. People do mistake that if you're in current use, you have to allow to recreate.
Well, right, there's a couple of different levels of current use.
If you allow recreation use, then yes, there, you know, but go look at the case, go look at the court logs. It doesn't mean someone cannot sue you. And even if you win, you're still at, at the very least footing it, the bill, someone's, people have suggested that they'll, they'll cover your legal bills. A law passed in New Hampshire a couple of years ago saying that unless it's specifically spelled out in the statute, you no longer have legal recourse for your bills. I don't know if that statute in particular has that spelled out. We're aware that those are protections and Joe's dad's old school and he kind of always said, oh, the law protects us. Doesn't protect you from someone suing you.
No, it's.
And if there are known hazards on your property and you fail to inform someone you're letting on your property. But, but you're the ones inviting people onto our property, not us. We don't know who you're inviting. We couldn't possibly inform them of every hazard on our property. So there are exposures here and we're not saying we're unwilling to, we just wanted to figure out how we make sure those are covered, you know? Is it as simple as once having everyone who wants to use the beach sign a waiver? Like, I don't know what the answer is. Why we asked you all to figure that out, because we, you know, we don't know what it is. And sure, I know that we had to, because of our new home off Joe's parents driveway, we had to make it portion of it a private road. We had to pick up a pretty substantial liability policy. In case a random person drove off our driveway, I mean, that's a private driveway with two homes on it, yet there's not, we're being told there's nothing covering this half mile into a woods on a body of water with a dam and a river and all sorts of potential hazards.
Yeah, and I, I would like to add that I think a lot of people are frustrated because they like to use that space to walk, which is great. But we do have lots of other trails in town that allow all of those things.
That we have programs for.
Yep.
That we advertise.
Yep.
And I feel like these ladies have been very clear. When the gate is closed, the beach is closed. But I don't know that when I, all these people have come to the board, like I feel like that's, you know, I heard. I'm not going to pick on the last chair, but you know, well, yes, it's private property, but it followed with a, it's disappointing. I felt like the, we just felt like the message wasn't, well, if the beach is closed, what's your purpose for taking a five minute walk in their woods that you can't go onto the beach for?
They don't belong there.
You don't belong there.
They don't belong, period.
Period. So, you know, maybe that whole sort of laissez faire attitude we adopted during COVID sort of led to this misunderstanding that.
How I see the problem, all right, in my, my years of being around, um, is the lax data, but Daisy approach, you'd want to say that was taken for years. Don't blame, I'm not blaming your family for doing it, but it is what it is, you know? That's.
They do.
Even, even if we, let's just hypothetically say the beach doesn't open this year. One of your major complaints in what you're talking about now is the fact of people trespassing and going on to the property. That's from what you just, basically what you read was all about people trespassing on the property.
It's about how we, well, why we got to where we were at more than anything.
Sure, there's two things. We want our liability covered. And the second thing is, we give up a portion of our land to the townspeople from Memorial Day to Labor Day. We don't even go over there. So the, the, all we're asking for is the other eight months to stay out. It's pretty simple.
Hundred percent, again, so I was getting to a point before you, you know, what I'm saying is that even if, let's say we hypothetically closed the beach, said it's just not open due to liability reasons, because the, the, you know, we don't, can't have the fish, um, the lines up. We can't actually support it and, and it gets closed. We cannot stop the trespassers from trespassing.
Of course not. And we, you know.
So, so I mean, again, now if that person trespasses, it, it has an accident on your property. I don't see how in the court's going to find that you're liable for somebody trespassing.
I think that was the point of what I said before. They're trespassing on our land to go trespass on your land when they're not allowed there.
They're not, they're not coming to our.
They wouldn't care about our little sliver, our little path if they couldn't go to your beach.
That's the only reason they're there. If the town beach wasn't there, they wouldn't be there. The hunters would be.
Well, what about all the dog walkers and the?
No, because they aren't letting their dogs play on the beach while the gates close. That's what they're going out there to let their dogs swim and run around.
Even though the sign does say there in black and white.
No dogs.
Yep.
They're, your rule, not ours.
No dogs, no boats.
The, the point what I'm trying to say is that, you know, even if the town offer, you know, again, where this new agreement comes in here, you know, there's things written in here about the, uh, that's, but again, I.
That's, yeah, we're not discussing.
We're in a beginning stage, right? We're not getting there. I don't feel a way for even if it's closed or even if it's the access stops. The problems that you're asking for are still going to persist.
We are going to have the occasional trespasser just as an owner of a large parcel of land. We, we understand that. And quite honestly, had the problems not be what they were, we probably wouldn't mind the occasional person walking through, but we've had to say.
No, but if they're, when they abuse you, that's a problem.
Yes.
I would like to say also though, if that does happen, say we open the beach, the problems that we have will still be happening.
Well, I think it comes down to exactly what you had said is a management plan. And there isn't a plan because we've been trying to figure out legally.
They came up with one back in the nineties. They just never did anything.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, a plan that will be implemented.
Right.
And we have made, it has gotten much better. I mean, granted, weather's getting better, maybe that will be different. But it's that act of sort of opening the gate with nobody there managing it. That, that's when we're going to get an influx again of people and people who don't care how many no trespassing signs we put up, who don't care. And we will start calling the police and we are going to start taking, going to court. Because that's all we're, you guys can't even write a ticket. It's a court, it's a, we have to appear in court every single time, like. But we're gonna have to do that if, and this is, listen, I'm not necessarily saying this is any of your fault. It's not our fault, but like it's people behaving badly and yet we're all the ones being hung out to dry for it. Like, none of this would be an issue if people could follow the rules. And they, they just can't. And quite honestly, if you close the beach, we would plant trees in front of that road and there would no longer look like there's a dog park out on our property. I've got to be honest, if the beach was closed, we would fill that in very quickly to, we don't use it, we don't need it. So it's, you know, solely, it's just an invitation. It's an invitation to not just the townspeople, but to everyone. And maybe some of the people who treat, or well, no, unfortunately I've had to serve no trespass if someone made me cry. It was a resident, but you know, a lot of these people have no recourse if they don't care because they, they're never going to run into us again. Or they don't care if, you know, to get into a scrap with a Nottingham PD, so. You know, and, uh, the other thing is a lot of the recreation protections that exist exist when you open the land to the entire public. We are not doing that.
Yes, that's true. I.
So unless we are ripping down that gate and saying, everyone can come.
And you don't want to do that.
I like the town wants us to do.
It's just a tough spot. I recognize it's a tough spot for us. We did hope we could try some things at the very least. But now I feel like we're under the gun. And, you know, I feel terrible that these ladies are in a crunch now. We've realized, we realize that we are going to be dealing with a nightmare this weekend if that gate does not open. We fully are prepared for that. The police are fully prepared for that. I just think we could have, should have come up with some plan back in the fall when we first came to you all, like, you know? I think for us, we're like, well, maybe having a person sitting at that gate, making sure you're a resident, maybe signing a waiver. And making sure you leave when you're supposed to leave and that you know the rules or.
And I will, I mean, so it's, I don't want you to feel like the Board of Selectmen has ignored, like, since you came out and.
I said, you have definitely reached.
No, no, but I think we've addressed it here and I'm sorry if you feel that we have not been clear.
You guys, if you want to have a conversation, thank you.
I felt we were clear in public meetings about the fact that the land was not accessible during that period of time. And I'm sorry if you feel we were not.
No, you, again, it was a hard thing to say because like, you know, it, and more it was the person who was, you know, it was more like the follow, like it's unfortunate, like the kind of side comments, the delivery, yes, the delivery. I, we knew that you understood, you knew that you, we knew that you all respected that that was our right, but like it clearly the way the public acted, it did look like we were the, it did come across to everyone that it was us who was. And quite honestly, it wasn't. It was bad behavior number one. And number two, posting our property was a last resort and it was at the guidance of, and the support of the rec and the police and all of you.
And I think, so since then though, we have been trying to get some sort of legal, it's, it's a very unique situation. And I think there's two things that come into play is the legal side of things and coming up with an agreement with you as the landowners. And then insurance wise, which I know is a big thing, is liability is how is that covered and who is covered and unfortunately, it's an answer, an answer we don't have yet.
Right. But we could have if we, if Ellen had taken action a little sooner.
But you know.
I think we checked with Primex first. Honestly, we found out via the Facebook that you all had even, were engaging the attorney to come up with an agreement with us. That's how we found out.
But well, that had started.
Two meetings ago on Facebook, but we were not aware.
That had started back when you originally requested.
No one ever communicated that to us. We found out on Facebook.
So again, I'm, I'm from what you read to us, you know, the issue which came upon is from your statement, is the fact of people trespassing on the property when the property is not meant to be open to the public.
Oh, no, when it's open as well, like.
Like if they're going into this, if the beach is open and they're going in to use the beach, there's no reason to go anywhere but on that road and on the beach.
Right. And again, the behavior.
The bigger, the bigger concern really is when the beach is open, the liability. I keep saying that, like trespassers, whatever, I'll go over there and throw them out. I don't care. It's the liability of the road that we assume so that the town and people from out of town and out of state can cross over there to go to the beach. And I think that's a lot to ask. And then, and then so, sure, we could go pull some sort of liability policy. But is it fair for us to pay for that?
And we've even offered to pull it, just pay, pay us for it.
Wait a second, we're going a little. If the town had the lib, in our policy, covered the liability from Memorial Day to Labor Day. All right, that would cover us. That would cover you. All right, from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now whether you're agreeable to that or not is something to be determined.
Or if it's even possible.
Or if it's even, right.
You're saying it would cover on the road?
Anybody accessing over your property to get to the beach. Isn't that what we're talking about?
Yes, but I don't think that that's how that would work. We were told you the town couldn't take a policy on land they didn't own.
So then I offered to take a policy, just tell me you'll reimburse me for it.
Yeah, I don't know how that.
And, and not, and not to.
So there has to be determined.
Not to make this even more of a twist, but in the months that the beach isn't open, the people that are trespassing are doing so to go to the town property. So in my opinion, whatever, if, if the policy needs to cover the, the full year. Because, you know, the guy that gets bit by the pit bull that's out there and wants to sue us, they were just going for a walk to the town beach. So how is it fair for the other eight months for us to assume that liability? It's still, should be year round. And that's, that's what we want.
And so I think we're still trying to unfortunately.
Right, and I, this is going to.
Because it is such, it's, it's where that beach is and how far it is so that police can't just regularly drive by and say, oh, someone's there.
I mean, unfortunately it took till today at two or three o'clock to get something from the town attorney. But we need to review that. We need to have it reviewed. There's going to be back and forth.
Yeah, we need to review it as well.
Right, and I don't know that, you know, I know everyone wants the beach open this weekend, but I don't really see that as a possibility.
Well, there's two things. Number one, that road, although the state was down there a week and a half or two, I haven't been, I don't know if you took a ride down.
We went down.
Um, but the condition when I, thank you for giving me permission to walk down.
I haven't been down because I don't have permission.
Everywhere I was walking, making sure, okay, I'm just walking out. I've got some permission from somebody, it's here. Um, is that, I mean, the road was accessible, but I mean, I don't think people would want to drive a vehicle down it. There's like large branches still across the road. And on the beach itself, there's three, four trees that the beavers took down that I don't think it's still.
No.
Those are still there. Also, there's no way that two cars can pass. There's a lot of cleanup that needs to be.
And the state cut down that huge bolt pine and just piled, and they.
So they did lean it there.
They did. They piled it up nicely, but you've now lost parking spots. And they did, they went above and beyond. I feel like they cleared the tree that was across your parking area. They cleared the big widow maker hanging over your path. So they definitely did the stuff that, you know, I appreciated people wanting to come in with their chainsaws when we have no insurance on the property. But this was definitely not a bring your chainsaw situation. It took the state three days and they didn't even do all that they had told us they were hoping to get to, but you know, and there's no issue with us and the state. We love the state. We welcome the state. We have a great relationship with them. I'm the one who notified them right after this storm. I notified you all that the trees were down so that you could all have ample time to get it cleaned up, whatever, sort of.
I have a problem with the state. They always cut my lock.
We've also had to replace our lock three times because angry people have ripped down our signs and keep jamming our locks, which is, you know, police are driving around this town without bolt cutters and, you know, these are the things we have nightmares about is.
I have replaced multiple no dog signs. They keep getting scratched out. We keep replacing. There's also a lot during the town beach season that people are using that dam to jump off. And that's not our property, not the town beach.
That's state property.
Completely unsafe and you don't know how deep it.
It's not very deep.
No, no. No, so that's another liability too.
And there, and I, that was one of the things on our list, like the state used to have a gate and no state property, no trespassing signs. Those have been destroyed. There was a gate that the state told us they, we put in three times to protect us from people coming over the bridge. That someone has ripped out three times. They very nicely put it back in, but the wind's probably gonna blow it over. It's, needs to be cemented in there. Um, they amped up that bridge to drive drilling rigs across it this winter to, because they're have. Arpa funds to possibly redo the dam at some point and they, um. Yeah, I'm worried a teenager's gonna drive over that. And again, I'm not, we're not just talking about our privacy. We're talking about like genuine safety and like liability concerns that we have out there. So it's just gone unchecked for too long and I do think that, like, I totally know that. Understand where you're coming from, John. We're, we, we own a big, beautiful wood piece property. We've invited people. There's a trail from one fifty six to Fundy. If people were still doing that, that's.
That trail hasn't really been. Go, let's not go with that trail there. I used to enjoy that trail.
Yes.
And I walked the trail from the state park boat launch all the way over to your property. Now I'd get lost in that trail. Yeah, exactly. It kind of just goes.
I get lost now in the middle. But again, like, that's the sort of recreating that's been invited, had, had my in-laws now knowing what they know. They were never inviting people to trespass on the beach. They had no idea that that's where people were going and landing and what they were doing.
I'm hoping that you'll accept public comment. Do you want to wait?
Should we get out of the way?
Yeah.
You guys want? Sure, sure. Just stay right there. It's gotta be quick, right? Because we're gonna go back to you.
It's gonna be quick because I want to go home too. Um, I'm a close neighbor. I live on Deerfield Road. I pass by often. I've often gone down there during the legal times. And um, I will tell you that no good comes in that area in Deerfield Road after midnight. There are a lot of teenagers and if we're coming home late from something, those cars are parked in front of that gate. And uh, we get a lot of traffic. We get a lot of liquor bottles and beer bottles out in front of our house and all the way down there. So from a neighborly perspective, it's an annoyance to us as well. Um, I go down there often. The most I've ever seen people swimming there in the summertime, I'd say maybe, well, just as to twenty, twenty-five people, tops. For two months out of the year because the rest of the time there is bacterial contamination. And we always go down and someone will say, yes, we're vacationing from Connecticut and you know, there are blueberries here and and we know this and that. Uh, I believe Steve himself.
They don't belong there.
Did you go over the dam?
That's Dolph Dam.
Oh, Dolph, I'm sorry, rundown, sorry.
People do love to pillage our blueberries.
By the way, just to add the point, the state used to have no trespassing signs on both dams. They no longer have those signs and I think that's a problem the state should address. The both dams used to have prominent no trespassing signs and they don't have them on either dam right now.
So my point is to wrap up is I wish the world was a different place. I wish we could just ramble wherever we want. But I'm in full support of of the Farnolds and um, I, I think at one point I was chatting um, with Dawn. And I said, rip the bandage off. Um, it's, recreation has said it's a nightmare. Fawn has been very open about what a nightmare it is to patrol that. It's impossible to patrol that. We don't have the funds. The population wants to use it. The community wants to use it, but can't pay for it. So at this point, although I'd love to see something worked out, if we could do it, I don't see that that's been done. And maybe back to the drawing board, I just don't see how it can open this weekend. Thank you.
Any comment? I've made my comment. I mean, I, I've been down there and, I mean, and just based upon my conversation. Um, with the rec department and the fact that they typically, I mean, there's boats that travel in there. And they typically have swim lines out to protect the swimmers from those boats coming through those. And they, they don't even have them right now.
We've been told to our faces that people who launch their kayaks are going to continue to launch it no matter what. So that's a very valid thing that you said there. They've stopped by our office and.
There's a boat ramp right down the road where they're supposed to be launching their kayak.
Every single time and unfortunately.
Say it too, John.
Yeah.
The signs are clearly stated.
And our website was very clear. It's just really unfortunate and this is a really tough subject for a lot of people. But it's been an absolute nightmare, honestly. And I don't have lifeguards. I mean, that alone is scary to me. A lot of these public places don't. Um, but we can't utilize it as a rec program because my lifeguards can come through field trips and and they have other jobs. Because we didn't know about the status of this. So I do have two. We are looking for a third for our, our own field trips. But we can't utilize the town beach if we don't have a guard that can come. So and our current guards cannot come on any more days except the field trip days that we're taking. So.
Yeah, I mean, I don't feel we have a plan at this point. Or an agreement.
Agreed.
And in fairness to you all, I don't think you were aware of the situation until we got a little saucy in January and said. We're tired of being ignored. So we've been talking to rec and Ellen and the police and then we. We had requested a meeting with you all back in December and I don't know, went into spam or something and so we just felt like we were ignored for two months.
We all inherited this problem.
We all inherited this problem.
We all inherited this problem. Now it's come to a head to be a problem.
Yes.
Yes, which we're willing to work through, but it's gonna take some time to, to do that. We have to do what's fair for everybody.
And the road's not even cleaned adequately either at this point. No, I have no problem right now, you know, saying that the town beach is not open for this Memorial Day. Or 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 until otherwise noticed. I have no problem with that. The, the question I have that comes up is to how we solve this problem in a timely fashion. If we can, to adequately keep giving the residents. This gift of the use of the town beach. Even though there is plenty of other access around to get to, you know, there's a state park beach, beautiful acres over there. Other access, you know, to the water around the, the uh, the lake. You know, that's the only drum, I mean, and again, even when we say right now, we're not opening the things. Your problems aren't going away. And it doesn't matter what we, it's not, it's, we can say it's closed and it's done and that's it. But your problems aren't going away.
You say it's closed and it's done. My problems are going away. I'm planting trees.
Well, again, then, then you're, then you're, then you, whatever, you're gonna deal with the state and their access to get.
They actually can get to the dam much better up our nice wide maintained driveway.
We've been dealing with people coming in there.
You've already solved, you've already answered that question. So that's.
We work from home. We can throw them out any time of day.
We recognize we're always going to have the occasional trespasser. I think it's, it's silly to not admit that the reason we have the volume we do. Is because that, of the town beach and the lack of sort of enforcing rules for the past several years. Like it's, yes, people have always swam down there. People have always walked our property. But it has never been what it has been until the past several years. Like it has grown out of control in the past.
Well, I'm a lot, I'm concerned with the non-residents that are showing up.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's even beyond.
Think these guys get phone calls on a regular daily basis.
Where I can go to swim. Where are you from? Not Nottingham.
Yeah.
I mean, there will, there will be people with Massachusetts plates, Maine plates parked right in front of the game.
They'll see the sign and they'll just park and walk in.
Yeah, I kicked out, we kicked out, we're fonded fifteen kids from Portsmouth during COVID. I mean.
Yeah, we removed a treasure hunter from Maine. Um, he was looking for bottles and, you know, actually that's theft. Even when you're allowed to recreate on somebody's property without permission. Okay, fine, you're treasure hunting. But he left a glass pile along a, you know, he picked up pieces and set them all over rocks and dug up a whole glass pile. The, the size of this along a brook and left it. Like, that's the kind of stuff that like, you know, again. Anyone with a large parcel of land probably deals with that kind of nuisance and that's not, but it's just, you know, people just don't have the respect they once did.
If the liability stuff was figured out, a gatekeeper being there would be your most favorable thing.
Yes.
Within a year where.
Let's be realistic here. You're not getting a gatekeeper.
Right.
We promised it thirty years ago.
Go find those people from thirty years ago. They're probably dead or not even here anymore.
But realistically, that's what every beach has. Someone checking. Instead, we've relied on some fifteen year old child. Who's out there lifeguarding every mo-, I watch every, you know, I used to go there all the time when my kids were little and every mommy, the minute. They identified someone they didn't know from town was all over that poor fifteen year old to remove them. And then they called the police and say, yeah, we're not coming down there. So it's.
That was years ago and you can't even have a fifteen year old lifeguarding until they are sixteen and open water. So.
So the town beach is.
You have to make a motion.
Why? Do you, do you, we're done with them.
Yeah.
You want to have a conversation between us three here?
Yeah.
So this is where it's really coming down to is the three people you're sitting here is to make, I mean.
And we are happy as soon as possible to sit down in a workshop with you guys or one of you. So it doesn't have to be a quorum and the rec and the police and Ellen, like, I do feel like there is something we could at least attempt moving forward. Before we all, I love the town beach. You know, I've even said to Courtney, the very least, like, maybe the rec could still use it. Like, I love the town beach. I spent many a beautiful summer day with my kids there. They learned to swim there. I don't necessarily want to see this tradition end. I just don't think it's fair to say, yes, we have this beautiful thing. We want to invite the public to use it. Sorry, we can't do anything though to manage it. See you next season. Like, it's a crappy feeling for us. And again, not you specifically.
I just have the luxury of sitting in the wrong seat.
I wish Fawn was here because she probably opened some eyes to some of the other stuff that goes on there that.
Yeah, I mean, we barely touched on the sort of things.
Make it tonight.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Right, so it sounds like we have some follow up to do as far as.
And I'm happy.
Reviewing the agreement, discussing it and looking to see what we can do for a plan. And, you know, coming up with something for the future, but it doesn't sound like this weekend's ago.
Or, I mean, I think in the interim.
Right. Do we have something?
Yeah.
One sec. All right, we can finish. You guys, you guys good?
Yeah.
Sure.
We're just gonna open this up. Jen, look, if this becomes anywhere out of control with questions, I'm just gonna shut it down.
Thank you.
I'll take the first one. So I'm Dan Davis. I live on Deerfield Road. Watching this close. If the, if the road's shut down, it's unfortunate, but let's say um, I paddle in with my kayak from the boat launch. And I do that Monday and the gate's closed. Is the town beach still open? Can I get out of my kayak and sit on that park bench and read a magazine and look out over the water?
No, that's what we're saying.
All right, if the beach is closed, the beach is closed.
But if the front gates, if access is closed, then the beach is closed. Okay.
The property is closed. It's the same as, you're gonna see, if, if we close the beach access, think about it this way. We got a town pit out back, right? On the other side off Smoke Street. You can't go there.
It's black and white. You don't have to give me analogies or explain.
Yeah, so. Other people around, I'm giving a black and white answer.
Signs on the water so the boaters don't come in.
Be a good idea.
And the second question, is it, is it close for everybody in town?
Yes.
Well, yeah, for one, it's all. Okay.
Other emergency, basically all it's open for.
Yeah.
Hold on, you were next. Come here, come up and say your name.
Say your name.
Is there any type of formal arrangement after all these sixty years at all between the formals and the town we got in this?
No.
Nothing at all. I mean, it's just our.
No.
Okay.
That's the way things were done. There's a lot of things in town like that.
So I can understand the issue of liability.
Correct.
And so what do we know now after this has been raised and discussed for the last six months at least, or is, is, is that possible? I mean, you know, it would seem that the town would own some liability during the time which it's open between Memorial and Labor.
Well, that's part of the discussion we just had.
Right.
Sure. Um, so, I mean, it just seems a crime to just, you know, on the short term looks, yes. Recs, they have certain product a day, but then the public uses it.
Well, the rec, the rec is not there.
Exactly. And then, you know, most of the time it's not like it's, it's the public and, and what have you. I understand the other service. Have the police done any enforcement around the cows parked there or people trespassing?
Again, we'll find that, I mean, again, we've already heard some of the answers that they haven't been able to. Not that they don't want to. It's been able to. You know, again, we're, we're limited to the amount of police that we have. We're limited to the amount of budget that we have to spend. We can't put a police officer at the beach when it's open all the time.
And just them driving down?
And the, the reason we're in this situation, I feel for the residents of Nottingham. But shame on all the people that could not respectfully enjoy the way it was.
Unexcusable, unexcusable. That's, if there's a sign, I may move on. I'm saying if there's a sign that says, if you park here, your cow will be towed. If there's a cow parked there and the police drive by, I mean, they may, they may catch one in five. But if they call the tow company and that cow's towed, believe me, that'll get around.
Exactly.
And do it a second time, a third time, if they get one a week or two a week or five a week, believe me, that's all.
That will be addressed. Unfortunately, Fawn is not able to, uh, Chief, uh, Woodman's not able to be here tonight, but that will be addressed with her.
And if you trespass, you will be arrested. I mean, I just, I mean, if the signs are, uh, these are legitimately legal signs you can post. And I don't know who has the right to post those. Who puts those signs up? Is that the town or is that like?
We have, we posted the signs, but again, you, getting back, hey, side conversations is that. You have the answer to trespassing, but if our officer is going to a medical emergency or going something else, that supersedes the trespassing. And we only have one officer sometimes that thinks so. Again, I'm speaking, I, when I speak, I speak in general to make sure that everybody hears everything that's going on. It's not just a one thing. You know, I'm trying to make sure that we're covering a lot of bases on comments. Um, but I had, I thank you. I mean, do you have anything more to add? Sorry.
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, the whole sticker thing, I mean, again, people are in there, they don't have a sticker. I mean, again, if I would think if the, if in the course of a hot summer day, we just have to be more careful than another day. If the police officer took ten minutes out of their routine and drove through there.
But what if that officer's, I mean, again, the, we don't, the, there's not enough officers, even you'd want to say that you'd want that situation. And I'm speaking in a general form, but we also take on the duty and this town is for the state park. Come, our officers. So we signed an agreement with the state. So a lot of times our officers are on the opposite side of town. Dealing with other issues.
To your point, Chief Woodman has said they don't.
They don't have.
They don't, to even do that. They don't have.
Yeah, it's just not.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that they make this a priority. I'm just saying.
No, yeah.
I'm saying that.
I mean, they have it, they, they have on.
Some of their days is idle without emergencies or.
Well, I've.
I mean, I'm nice idle. I mean, they're just not answering my, you know, I, I'm just guessing. I could be way off. They may be straight constantly. But to find, I, I think this is a, one of the, was a very important resource in this town. I think people speak probably, the fact we have a town beach.
Yeah.
Like, that way there's not many opportunities like that for other surrounding towns.
You know what? It might actually come to this year, again, just type speaking over generally, it might come to a fact that a warrant comes out for money to be paid. So that we can police it, we can do it for next year. And we'll see if the people vote on it to wearing to spend the money. But right now we don't have it, so it's not the case.
No, and, and, and just saying on that note, many towns charge a normal fee to their residents to support.
We won't go on fees. We won't go on fees.
If you want to use it, you pay a fee.
Yeah, well, I tried that with the dump, but that ain't working either, so. Thank you for your time. Sir, state your name.
Uh, I'm Stu Fife. I live on Deerfield Road, just down the road. Um, there's two ways of looking at this, as, as I see it. There's this year and there's the risk reward. There's great risk here to, to the town, to the landowners. And the reward is for a couple of months' use in the summertime. And to me, it looks like the risk is much heavier than the reward is on this. And I think we need to make a decision on whether or not. We're gonna take that risk. And the time to do it is now, as we open up the season. The second part is, and my thunder was kind of stolen on this, a plan to put together what it would cost. To adequately. A plan to put together what it would cost to adequately open up and supervise that area, how much money it would cost. Uh, that's with security and everything, and put it to the voters. I've, I've found when budget cuts come from being in education for many years, unless it makes people uncomfortable, nothing's going to change. And before anything's going to happen with that, with the waterway and that beach area, it's going to have to be a little uncomfortable for people. And then maybe they'll show up and support a budget and support a warrant article.
Thank you.
Hey, Autumn and Debbie Ricker from eighty-three Stevens Hill Road. Uh, first, just wanted to thank, um, the Furnalls for speaking tonight and bringing to light a lot of the, uh, history of the Town Beach and the concerns and how things have gotten to where they are today. I think that information was not out there, um, and it's certainly helpful for the town residents to understand, you know, why the situ- situation is how it is. And certainly encourage the town to continue to try and find a, uh, a way forward to keep the beach open. Uh, as with others in town, certainly it's where my kids learn to swim and is a great resource. In the interim, um, I don't know if the, the board is aware, but still posted on the town website under the Board of Selectmen page in the official town ordinance and policies is the Town Beach Rules, which has nothing about when the Town Beach is open, the hours it's open, um, no explicit statement that you are trespassing on town property if you are there when the gate is closed. So I'd encourage the town to consider to provide consistency, not just with signage at the site with what, what you're broadcasting to the world on the town's website.
That probably will be changed by tomorrow.
Additionally, um-
That's why we're bringing it up.
If you search, if you search further on the town's website, you'll also find mention of the Town Beach in the Recreation Department website. And that, uh, that site, though not formed as a policy, um, does state that, uh, the Town Beach is open, um, Memorial Day through Labor Day, but connected in the same sentence when it mentions porta potties. Lady wants to believe that's when the porta potties were there, and basically you have no facilities, uh, outside of those hours, just like the state park. So, uh, again, for consistency, probably provide similar messaging on both sections of the town website and tie that into what is presently posted, so people, uh, get that wide understanding.
I'd like to note that during COVID, when the swim lines weren't put out, there were several boats that beached on the Town Beach from out of state. They'd like saw a beach. They're like, oh, let's park there. Kids got out, came right up, disregarded people swimming. The gate was open. Was in use, but, um, so yeah, having it posted, if you're going to close it, have it posted on the waterside.
It'll be used by everybody except town residents, which people that show up on a pont.
Like, people will put in a fundy. They kayak over.
We probably should at least get-
We had a speedboat come in.
We probably should at least get the swim lines up, even if there's no swimming.
Yes. Yes. It will deter some.
Right, even if they're old and rotten, having them there is makes it illegal to cross.
After that summer, we sent Courtney some photos of the two incidences that we encountered so that she would have them.
That's a great point.
Yeah, so, I think that was it.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we're going to go for a couple more, but that, you, you, fine. Yeah, we're going to, we have other agenda meetings tonight, non-public and stuff to go through, so.
Um, my name is Robin Prue, and I've lived in town for fifty years, and my family has been here for, forever. And I just feel that the townspeople, I, I just hope that you come to some kind of, some kind of compromise or something to have the beach open even this, this summer. Because the townspeople use this beach. They love this beach. It's part of their, what they do in the summer. I hope you can come to some, some consensus because, um, I think you're going to have a lot of problems. People will be very, very unhappy if the beach is not open this summer. That's all.
Well, the library right here gives free passes to the state park. So if you want a beach, it's a big one over there, too, just for anybody in town that wants to know. But I, I understand where you're coming from, and I'm sure we will be hearing our chatter.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's it.
Thank you.
All right, guys. From what we heard tonight, do you feel that we should not have the beach open for this, until further notice?
Until further notice. Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion. I make a motion that at this point, we do not open the Town Beach until further notice when we can have an agreement and, um-
Management plan in place.
Right, a management plan, yeah.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim DaBrio.
We will be changing tomorrow. We'll have a message in to make sure that the updated website, this will be put on there for everybody looking. There will be, I don't know if we'll get a sign up by then, uh, but there will be a sign that'll say the Town Beach is closed until further notice, uh, you know, and trespassers take notice. I think it's already a trespassing sign there, but, you know, I mean, that, and again, that's the best that we're going to be able to do. For anybody that trespasses over your property from now to then, feel free to do whatever you need to do. Uh, but we're going to publicly put it out that it's closed and do what we have to do here, but from there on in is, I feel for you for what's going to take place.
Right. Courtney, do we have old swim lines available that we could put out?
We do not. Our swim lines were very old, and they were on the verge of ripping last year, so we tossed them and it, hoping to buy new ones over the winter, and without knowing what was happening, I didn't want to spend that money with the current budget. So, and those are very expensive.
No, I know. We will find a way to-
Pulling genitals in room.
Yeah, I mean, if we have to. Right, right. But we do have the permit, right?
Uh, I found a permit online. I have no idea if the town's ever submitted-
Can you please make sure that we get that permitted?
I sure can.
And just game cameras cost about a hundred bucks and about five dollars a month for the town department to get a little text when there's somebody on the beach.
I'll, I'll get that with my stipend.
That's not even spent twice.
All right, so from now, we're going to move on. We have to go to our assessing points. Since we skipped that, we're going back. You feel free to, here to go through our assessing. Uh, then we've got some other general public comments at the end. We're going to review action items for our next meeting. And then after that, we are going to go into our non-public. Thank you all for attending. All right.
I'm not going to go on the correspondence part. Just moving on. Yeah.
We're moving on, so.
So I go to assessing?
We're going to assessing right now.
So I'll make a motion to approve, and I'm just going to go through all of the solar exemptions?
Yeah, we'll do it as, yeah, since they're all together.
Yeah, map twenty-four, lot eighteen.
Excuse me one second. Can somebody, uh- Just because we're being recorded.
Just to make sure it's not locked.
Right, yeah. No, they get loud when they adjourn randomly.
Okay, sorry. Now we'll go back.
I make a motion to approve the-
Hey, guys, we just closed the door for the reason. Thanks, guys.
I make a motion to approve the solar energy system exemption for map twenty-four, lot eighteen, map thirty-nine, lot six dash twenty-three, map eighteen, lot twenty, map four, lot five, map ten, lot four dash one dash three, map twenty-six, lot five, map thirteen, lot five, map fifty-three, lot six, map fourteen, lot twenty-five, and map thirty-seven, lot seven A.
I'll, I'll second.
So we have a motion in a second for the solar energy system exemption, in case anybody-
Go, go ahead. Sorry.
In case somebody's curious why this is it, and we have so many, is the town has decided in the past that anybody putting solar on their house, that we will not be taxing them for the fact of the cost of the panels on their house as a value. So this is what writes it off. That's the reason why it's there.
So these were all reviewed and approved?
Correct, that's why it's on.
Right, well, that's just-
That's why we're here.
Yep.
If you don't have them, you're not going to-
Well, because we had one that was kind of like in a weird state.
Well, it was across the street, and then they determined that they weren't providing the power.
Right. I know who that was. That's off which boat rode over there, but okay, yeah. So we got a motion. Got a second?
I seconded.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
All right, next.
I make a motion to approve the application for current use assessment on map thirty-two, lot nineteen.
Right, I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DaBrio. I make a motion to approve the all veterans tax credit for map eight, lot six, map forty-two, lot eight, map twenty-three, lot ten dash four.
Oh, okay, the, the other ones are different. All right, I'll second. I'm not even going to keep reading.
Yeah, that's okay. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DaBrio. I make a motion to approve the veterans tax credit for map twenty-eight, lot thirteen dash three, map fifty-five, lot three dash twenty-seven, and map thirty-seven, lot seven A.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DaBrio. Uh, and as we had discussed earlier, I make a motion to approve the service-connected total disability credit for map fifty-five, lot three.
All right, and, and that's the, uh, um-
The exception for the late application?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'll second.
So motion in a second. Roll call.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Boy, they are loud out there, aren't they?
I didn't have an opportunity to review the charitable.
No, do you have that in there? It should be in the back.
And this is for both of those lots, correct? Map forty-two and thirty-nine?
Looks that way.
So I make a motion to deny the charitable exemption for map thirty-two, lot one, and map thirty-nine, lot twenty-six.
It's number forty-two.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Thirty-two.
Oh, forty-two. I'm sorry. Make a motion to deny the charitable exemption for map forty-two, lot one, and map thirty-nine, lot twenty-six.
All right, I'll second.
Motion is-
Yeah, I was going to say, why are we denying or whatever?
Do you want to see it?
Yeah. The assessor has-
This is that big, long email that you got.
Yeah, no, I know, which is why I don't-
Instead of the, usually they're put to us as individuals.
Right.
And for some reason, it didn't come across that way. We had all these, so you literally had to take the time to scroll through the whole thing, and it was, you know, usually you just click on each one individually, and you can quickly read it. But this one here, you had to scroll, and it's a-
Now, which one did you?
We're on the last one.
The additional one?
The additional ones. No, they're-
All right, okay, sorry, I-
The charitable one. I don't even know where the heck it is in here.
Oh, this is the intent to cut the gravel.
They, they came in today, I think.
Yeah.
Did you find, where did you find it in here, Tim?
Four o'clock. That was, I didn't get to see that yet, so that's why I didn't even know about it. That was too late for me.
They cover letter.
Hmm?
It said in the, in the front there.
It's the very front. It's this whole thing.
Well, it's not that much.
Right, okay, they just don't meet, okay, yeah, yeah, so that's fine.
Do you second?
Yeah, huh? Yeah, I seconded it already, so we can discuss it.
Okay, good. Sorry. All in favor, all in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
This is for, uh, map forty-two dash one, map thirty-nine dash twenty-six, uh, charitable exception. They don't meet the, uh, criteria.
Wait, did that one you denied that there's a someone after that?
Well, that's the one that we're, we're still talking about.
Still talking, sorry.
Right, this is the one that we're-
Denied.
Denied.
Right, because they don't meet the qualification.
Okay, keep those clear.
Yeah, wasn't clear.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Now, we got some here that aren't on our agenda list, uh, that came in today. These are, um, we'll typical over, but this is an intent to cut, um, a warrant for a gravel tax levy, a warrant for a yield for a tax levy for timber, and another one for timber. So this is somebody that's intent to cut, to cut, um, and these usually we try to get out real quickly due to the sense of urgency of the time, uh, needed to get them done.
I make a, I make a motion to approve the intent to cut for map twenty-nine, lot eight.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DaBrio. Make a motion to approve the warrant for gravel tax levy on map ten, lot twelve.
I'll second.
Aye, John.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DaBrio. Make a motion to approve the warrant for yield tax levy on timber for map forty-eight, lots two dash one and two dash two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DaBrio. And make a motion to approve the warrant for yield tax levy timber for map two.
There's no lot number. Does it?
Yeah.
Lot one.
Lot one, two, lot one, okay. I'll second that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, John Warren. So again, just something to be clear for, when these, um, for these are like timber tacks for people cutting property, uh, trees and stuff on the property, we do try to put these up front and get them expedited due to the fact of the time scheduling with loggers to come in, the fact that we only meet two weeks, the fact that we're not going to be meeting, you know, it delays the process of doing it, so we just try to help expedite that for the, that purpose. And we've done this quite often in the past.
I, I appreciate you.
So we apologize for not being on our agenda for our minutes. Uh, did come over at the last minute at four o'clock today, but we, they had all the paperwork, so it's something for us that we are allowed to be approved. Review of action items for the next meeting. Well, we could put on the action items, the beach.
Yep.
Um, the action items to publicly go over roads and maintenance of the roads.
Yep.
Uh, so that we can address some of the, the lake issues or try to give a, an answer to, um, Mr. Jennings and anybody else that's concerned about the, uh, quality of the dirt roads. Uh, since the paved road seems to be kind of okay, but we know there's problems on those, too. Is there anything else you guys are thinking that might be, need to be discussed?
I can't think of, I think the beach access is the big piece to keep moving forward with. And again, in the meantime, I'm willing to meet with the rec and with Ellen and-
We need-
The police department.
And we need to talk about the, um, recycling stuff, probably still yet. The hours, the summer hour stuff.
Well, I think so, I believe what they're going to be doing is continuing to kind of poll people and see what the traffic is like.
Right, but according to Ellen's report, they're not polling people.
No, I know, and I did talk to her about that. It's more of a petition.
Right, that is not a poll.
No.
And it does not count how many people are actually using the, uh, recycling center during those hours.
So they are doing that, but my point in that is that I think tonight would be the first night that you could potentially assess any use because you got a holiday weekend coming up, and then really probably not until late June is, I think, from what our discussion was a few weeks ago, is people use it really in the summertime when they're on vacation. So there was four vehicles that came in between five and seven last Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Yes. Well, so, but again, I think it's early in the season, and I think, so I think we have to give it some time before-
Right, right. I mean, yeah, I think we need a whole summer worth of-
Right.
Counting.
But agenda item to talk about the hours at our recycling center.
Right, because we could easily just do a petition to have it open on Wednesday evening. Right, 'cause we could easily just do a petition to have it open on Wednesday evenings.
Oh, and something I just wanna bring up and note, um, that you said, Tim, not being, being a little critical of it, but whatever.
Go ahead, they got it there.
Is that I don't feel that the, the roads around the lake should be referred to, if we're calling it the recycling center, being all official, that they should be addressed as, you know, lake, the roads around the lake are the lake roads, 'cause there really isn't any camps on those roads, so calling them camp roads is, you know, I'm looking at residents right now that live there year-round, and, uh, they're not camps that they live in either. So, uh, again, just a point of clarity that when we call them camp roads, we kind of think of the back road, dirt path into nowhere, and not the fact that these are half a million, million-dollar homes that are on these per se roads.
And it, and it maintains a dichotomy between the lake and the town, which I think it did decrease.
Right, again, we are one entity, so we should be considered, you know, just clarify the location as the lake roads.
Yep, I will make sure I know that.
And again, it's just not, I think we all should, 'cause I hear Ellen saying it, I hear.
Stop calling it the dump, I'll stop, I'll make sure.
I'm, I'm making a real effort to stop calling it, and start addressing it as the recycling center.
I missed the dump.
Yeah.
But that's not it.
The incinerator.
Uh, so right now, we can just go to public comment? You two got anything to say?
Had to fix another car because of the rough road.
Drive slower.
The suspension.
Well. Gotta enjoy those sunsets, though. The sunrise, yeah, look beautiful from your house, so.
Sunsets are great.
Yeah, all right, so.
Guys at HCR know me really well.
Are you willing to go in and out of public?
Yes, they want us out of here.
So we will be actually entering into non-public per RSA 91-8, uh, colon 3, A, and I. And once we have finished, uh, the non-public, we will be, uh, adjourning this meeting and closing. Goodnight, Nottingham, and thank you for your interest.
All right, now we need to.
Now we make a roll, oh, we gotta do a roll call vote to go to non-public.
Oh, okay.
So somebody's gonna.
Well, I make a motion to go to non-public.
Sure, I'll make a motion to go to non-public, uh, per RSA 91-8, colon 3, 2, Section A, and Section I.
I second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote?
Aye, John Decker.